Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Torreiros and I am Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cellphones. The parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call during the summary of hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, please join me for rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will now move on to roll call. My name is Anthony Torreiros and I am here, Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio. Commissioner Bondal. Commissioner Bickford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardenois. Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
And Commissioner Young.
Here.
Okay, that is six present, so we do have quorum.
So we need to go and have, um, sorry.
Ah, Justin?
Yeah. Just have, have Commissioner Lardenois, if you could state the reason why you're using your just cause exception for tonight's virtual participation?
Yes, um, I have COVID-19.
Okay, and then the commission should vote on whether or not you would allow him to participate.
Do we need a motion or just a vote?
Um, yeah, let's have a, a motion.
Our motion, will you take a vote?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to accept the just cause exception for Commissioner Lardenois from Vice Chair Cantrell with a second from Commissioner Bickford. Uh, we will move to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio is absent. Commissioner Bondal? Oh, he's just walking in, sorry. We are voting on a just cause exemption for Commissioner Lardenois who is attending remotely due to COVID-19. Sorry, and it is your turn to vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. I believe that's seven yes, uh, so it is accepted.
Great, and then just a reminder for Commissioner Lardenois, before you vote on each item, you just need to publicly disclose whether anyone over eighteen years of age is present in the room and the general nature of that relationship.
Sure.
Thank you. We will now move on to summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audio visual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or repellent may make closing remarks for up to additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The planning commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section twenty dot one twenty dot four hundred of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section twenty dot one hundred dot two twenty of the municipal code. Agendas and staff reports for all, for this meeting may be accessed on the city's website. Okay, we'll move on to call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the planning commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with the commissioners or staff. All members of the planning commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the planning commission will now come to order. All right, we will move on to public comment. This is the time for public comment to the planning commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, planning, the planning commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. Uh, staff, do we have any speakers for public comment? Not seeing anyone come forward, so we will move on to deferrals and removals from calendar. Uh, any items scheduled for hearing this evening for which deferral is being requested will be taken out of order to be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral and removal is being requested. If you want to change any of the deferral dates recommended or speak to the question of deferring or removing these or any other items, you should say so at this time. Uh, and tonight we have two items listed for deferral. Item A is the administrative hearing for CP twenty-four dash zero zero two and ER twenty-four dash zero zero seven. And item B is the administrative hearing for CP twenty-four dash zero zero six and ER twenty-four dash zero five zero. Uh, staff, do we have any other items to defer today or any commentary on these deferrals?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Not at this time. We have no additional comments.
Thank you. In that case, I think we just need a motion to approve deferring these two items.
I move the, do we approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to defer, approve the deferral from Vice Chair Cantrell with a second from Commissioner Rosario. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we will move to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio is absent. Uh, Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That should be seven yeses, zero no's, and several absences, two absences, uh, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they are considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, the item may be removed from the consent calendar by the chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come to the podium at this time. Uh, and tonight we have three items on the consent calendar. Item A is approval of the minutes from our August fourteenth meeting. Item B is ET twenty-four dash zero zero one, which is a petition for the release of covenant of easement at four three six zero Stevens Creek Boulevard. And item C is PDC twenty-two dash zero seven eight, T twenty-two dash zero two seven, PD twenty-four dash zero zero two, and ER twenty-two dash one five six, which is a planned development rezoning, tentative map, and planned development permit for construction of a single-family home at one five eight one Minnesota Avenue. Uh, are there any public speakers for items currently on the consent calendar this evening? All right, I don't have any speaker cards and I'm not seeing anyone move forward, uh, so we will turn to the commission. Uh, do we have any requests for removals from consent this evening or otherwise a motion to proceed?
Move to proceed.
And we have a second. Thank you. Uh, so we have a, a motion to approve the consent calendar from Commissioner Rosario with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. If there's no further comment, we will move to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio is absent. Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Uh, Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's seven yes, zero no, and two absences, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's public hearing. Uh, we have two items on the agenda for this evening. The first is HLD twenty-four dash zero zero one, which is an application for the designation of a new city landmark historic district. Uh, before we move to the staff, uh, presentation, I've been, uh, asked by the city attorney to see if there are any ex parte communications that commissioners wish to disclose for, uh, this item. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so I will turn it over to staff for a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Torreiros. My name is Dana Peak. I'm the Historic Preservation Officer and Principal Planner in the Planning Department. Um, we are here tonight because on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the San Jose City Council adopted a resolution nominating the Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park neighborhood for designation as a city landmark historic district. The council also directed the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement staff to initiate the required process and proceedings to designate the historic district, including the necessary outreach to community members and property owners. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have the, the nominated district boundaries. The Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park neighborhood is located west, uh, in, uh, west of downtown. The neighborhood is accessed by three streets, Shealy, Harding, and Pershing Avenue. The Shealy and Pershing avenues transverse the area between the Alameda and Stockton Avenue. Harding Avenue is bound by Stockton Avenue and Hoover Avenue, which bisects the neighborhood from Shealy to Pershing avenues. The neighborhood was listed on the San Jose Historic Resources Inventory as an eligible conservation area or candidate city landmark district by the Historic Landmarks Commission on June third, twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Just a short overview, um, the district contains one hundred and thirty-two properties. It consists of two subdivisions that were developed at different times but intertwined through design, um, as it developed. Uh, it was initially constructed in the unincorporated area of San Jose between San Jose and Santa Clara. Portions of it were underway. That's the beginning of the, the development, which was the Shealy subdivision in the late eighteen eighties. And then it was finally built out before World War Two. Um, it was developed to meet an anticipated strong demand for housing and to provide amenities like street trees, architectural design, and other infrastructure improvements. So all of the improvements that were done for the subdivision because it was located out of the city were done by the developers. There's a significant concentration of houses with form and architectural detailing reflective of the period of significance of the district, which is eighteen eighty-eight to nineteen forty-one. We also have the consultants from Archives and Architecture present tonight if you have any additional, if you have any questions about the history of the, the district. Next slide, please. So this is just an outline of what the designation process is. As I started with, it, the district was nominated by the city council in April. Um, and staff was directed to move forward with the process. Planning staff started by establishing a project website, which includes all the, the district documentation, the historic district record, the individual property records for each one hundred and thirty-two properties. And also a, uh, new historic context on residential development that was done as part of this project. Um, we held one in-person and one hybrid community meeting on May thirtieth and June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. Uh, on August seventh, the Historic Landmarks Commission held, uh, their public hearing. The commission, um, has transmitted their report and recommendations to the planning commission tonight. And the planning commission, uh, is charged with transmitting its report and recommendation together with the, uh, report and recommendations from the Historic Landmarks Commission to the city council. Next slide, please. Uh, the project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA, um, due to, um, section five three three one, which are provisions that are related to historic resources. Next slide. So as I said, the planning commission is charged, um, with sort of the second part of the process. Um, and the recommendation is to receive the report and recommendation from the Historic Landmarks Commission um, to make a finding, um, that the district is geographically definable area of urban or rural character possessing a significant concentration or continuity of site, building, structures, or objects unified by past events, or aesthetically by plan or physical development. Um, and the last recommendation is, um, to recommend to the city council, um, that they adopt a resolution designating the district as a city landmark historic district. Um, that ends, um, staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. We will now open the floor to public comment on this item. Uh, I have a number of speaker cards here, but if you have not submitted a speaker card, I feel free to also make your way down to the front and we will get to you once we've made it to the speaker cards. Uh, first up, we have Ben Leach from PAC SJ. So if you could just state your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. My name is Ben Leach. I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Action Council of San Jose. Uh, we are a member-based, uh, preservation advocacy organization whose whole mission is to, um, argue that older places have relevance and a place in contemporary society, contemporary life. Um, we obviously, or maybe not obviously, are strongly in support of the establishment of this historic district and the tool of historic districts as preservation tools in general. Um, I think we're a little bit at a disadvantage here tonight, recognizing that San Jose has relatively few historic districts compared to peer cities. Um, all cities have historic districts. Um, the last historic district established here was in two thousand and seven. So there's going to be a learning curve for people who are encountering, um, what this is for the first time, and rightly so. This is an important decision that impacts people's places, um, that they live, and that's always going to be, um, a conversation worth having, but that conversation has been happening. Um, and I think that there is a lot of misinformation floating around about what this would do, what this wouldn't do, what, um, what the intent behind it is. Um, and I just hope that that can be, um, discussed with a clear understanding of what the, um, ordinance states and doesn't state. Um, this is not going to freeze buildings in time. Um, if you're familiar with the existing historic districts in the city, they're all dynamic, growing, um, changing neighborhoods um, that have a, a variety of homeowners and renters and uses. This will be a layer that regulates change, but I think that regulation is by design. It's not going to freeze anything in time. Historic preservation planning is really intended to manage change, not to, not to stop it. Um, and I think it's a system that, that works. Um, and it can work better if we do more of it and learn from what works and, and adjust, you know, maybe some regulations and procedures as we go, but this idea that, um, uh...
Thank you. Next up, we have Kay Gutnikt.
Hi, my name is Kay Gutnek and I live on Shealy Avenue in the proposed historic district area. And I had two things I wanted to say to you tonight. First of all, I support the historic designation. I'm one of four people that started this effort twenty years ago, so it's not been a decision that's been made lightly and without a lot of effort. The second thing is, I wanted to address, um, something I think that the commission might be looking at, and that is the impact on the overlay of the historic, uh, district on SB nine and our ability to build additional seven units potentially on a home site. So we have a hundred and thirty-two lots in the historic des, district that we want to designate, and we're a few blocks from the Deardong Plan area, which has an opportunity not yet realized to build thousands of potential living units. Um, so we do have high-density opportunities there, and considering the small number of applications that we've had so far in the city to, um, take advantage of SB nine on our small area of a hundred and thirty-two lots, the impact for additional housing, I think, is very negligible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Edward Saum.
Thank you, Chair. Cities Law. Dana, uh, my name is Edward Saum. I'll attempt to wear a few different hats in the hundred and twenty seconds here before me. Uh, as the Chair of the City's Historic Landmarks Commission from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, I was honored to help lead the discussion that put the hundred and thirty-two parcels on the HRI. As Kay mentioned, uh, she first approached then-councilmember Jaeger saying, "Councilmember Jaeger, tell you how long this process has been." Worked with councilmember Jaeger, worked with councilmember Oliverio, and now has worked with councilmember Davis to bring this forward. This has not been something that has been entered into lightly. As the President and Director for Planning and Land Use for the Shasta-Hansha Park Neighborhood Association, which includes this area, uh, positions that have held for six years and nine years, uh, respectively, pride in neighborhood and the diversity of the building stock in the neighborhood is the point. There are nine hundred square foot bungalows in this area. There are three-story Victorians that also have three or more units in this area. There are even a couple old buildings that are now commercial properties in this area. To characterize this area as something other than that diversity is factually incorrect. And lastly, as an architect by training who both lives and works a handful of blocks from this area, the cheapest, most affordable housing is the housing that already exists. The Your Old House Guidelines tell you how to add a two-story addition onto the back of an historic resource effectively and, uh, both cost-effectively and planning-effectively. The most environmentally sensitive housing is the housing that already exists. Less concrete, the less waste, et cetera, generated. Adding on to housing stock is the important thing. As you all may well know, the city planning staff is working with stakeholders to develop voluntary SB nine-style guidelines that would apply to historic resources. There are a hundred and twenty-two thousand lots in the city of San Jose eligible for SB nine. We're talking about a hundred and thirty-two. There have been thirty-five applications in three years. Let's not pretend otherwise.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Megan Halligan.
Hi, I'm Megan Halligan. I live at nine hundred Pershing Avenue. I do not live in a historic house. I live in, uh, a house that was built. Sorry, I live at nine hundred Pershing. Um, I live in a house that is not historic, but it would be designated under this historic thing. It was built twenty years ago or ten years ago. The thing about neighborhoods is that when we want resilient neighborhoods, we want them to be able to change with the people who are living in them. I don't know about you, but living in a nine hundred square foot bungalow, maybe that would be your choice, but for families that are trying to buy into San Jose, they buy this nine hundred square foot house thinking, "Well, we can put an addition on it. We can make this livable for our family for the way that we live now with, you know, remote work." And, uh, you know, it, we don't live in nine hundred square foot bungalows with families anymore. So if you make this historic designation on this neighborhood, you will keep that frozen in amber. And I know that they say, "Oh, well, we're going to do this in collaboration with our, with our people." Are you going to be able to put a different addition like our friends did down the street? Are you going to be able to raise your house and put another? Are you going to be able to raise your house and put another level on it, like our friends on the other side of the street did? I don't think that that is going to be possible. And so we will be frozen in time. And, you know, I'm all for history, but that's what museums are for, not for neighborhoods. Anyways.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Snyder.
I'm Kelly Snyder. I live at eight-eight-two Pershing, and you got a long letter for me on this item. I'm only going to talk about two things today. The first, if you can look at this sheet that I just handed your technician, is to remind you that our neighborhood is virtually, practically, literally practically, in a manner of speaking, part of the downtown of San Jose. It is overlapping the downtown station area plan, which I could show you. I'll hold it up. And the other one here shows how the border of downtown runs right along Stockton Avenue, which is the border of this proposed district. This neighborhood should be upzoned, intensified, redeveloped, and densified as soon as possible. If you adopt this district, you will restrict densification, it will prohibit demolition, and ground-up rebuilds. It is virtually a slap in the face to the urban future that all of these officials, especially Director Burton, have been telling us is coming our way. It is contrary to all of the policies of downtown of building up the Deirdre Don Station area, and it will harm our ability to have riders on BART and to get sufficient ridership. And it also goes against best practice for the twenty-first century. Secondly, the homeowners affected, such as me, do not know how expensive this is going to make things. When I bought my house, there was a plate glass window in the living room that an inspector told me would kill my children if they threw a toy into it. I went out to Home Depot that night. I bought a new window. I hired a lead abatement specialist, and I had the whole thing replaced in three days to protect my children. That would be impossible with this district. As the previous speaker said, these are homes that are in an urban neighborhood walkable to Deirdre Don Train Station, that we are begging you, just let us make them safe and healthy for our families. Do not put these additional restrictions that are far too expensive to be asking these entry-level homeowners to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you couldn't see my really great...
Sure. Okay. The next card here doesn't have a name, but it's listed as a representative for Fafa. And then after that, we'll have John Wolfram and Meredith Muller. So if you all want to make your way down front. Thank you.
My name is Fafa, and I live on Harding Avenue. So a century ago, homes were not designed to address the challenges of global warming. Many of these older houses also contains hazardous materials like lead paint and asbestos and often lack proper insulation. As a result, most of these houses are in poor condition and in need of significant repairs. However, imposing too many restrictions on renovation could significantly increase the difficulty and cost of addressing these critical issues. The tax incentives offered for maintaining historical homes are unlikely to cover the extensive and costly repair required under historical preservation restriction. In San Jose, obtaining a permit for any renovation or repair is already a lengthy and complicated process. If our neighborhood is designated as historic, this problem will come even more challenging and lengthy. Also, I'd like to add that designing the entire group of houses dilutes the historical value of the few houses of the actual historic value. I have few concerns. I'm a new member to this neighborhood. Some of my concerns, can we make our homes environmentally friendly? Because our homes, like my house, is hundred years old. It really requires that. It's like a thousand square feet. I need to extend it. Can we expand the house from the back, preserving the front while modernizing the back? Can we add a second floor? These houses require custom windows and touches to preserve them. Who's going to pay for all these costly repairs, like, you know, to preserve the look? Can we modernize inside the houses? There's so many questions as a homeowner. I don't know. Like, if you designate it historical, I honestly don't know what we're getting into. I'm not against historical. I love the history. But then, at the same time, I want to live in it comfortably, and I want to make sure that we can afford it. The houses in the San Jose is already...
Thank you. Next up, we have John Wolfram, followed by Meredith Muller.
Good evening, distinguished commission. My strong opinion is that proposal should be rejected as currently described. The only feature providing consist... Excuse me. Some legal and design restrictions are desirable, but city enforced restrictions preventing desirable needed modification is unadvisable in this neighborhood. And in some ways, because it's retroactive, could be considered unconstitutional. The Alameda Park homes, number one, are significantly inconsistent with each other in many ways. The only feature providing consistency is the sycamore trees lying in the street, which is a wonderful thing. Some homes are architecturally just plain unattractive and rundown. The portion of the presentation by the advocates to the City Historical Commission that significantly impressed them was the past history of these streets focusing on the grand estates prior to subdivision. That was nice to know, but we are talking about our current lives, capacity to improve, and to resell at market value. And applying to me, some homes like mine would require complete interior demolition and rearrangements of windows to sell anywhere near the price of homes here with more practical floor plans. The cost of this could be very well... could very well make the potential buyers either vastly reduce the bidding price below that of a partial or completely new home. Now, I have two items I want to propose or suggest as a way to look at this in a positive way. I would propose that following two items that are far more constitutional than just having others have extensive control over what an owner can do to improve the property structure and one's life in general. Number one, code changes are rarely applied retroactively in municipalities. Exceptions include partially disabled access provisions, retrofit of severely unsafe buildings, and it is the same in law enforcement, ex post facto. In historical restrictions, the amendment's development ordinance should not apply to current owners, and...
Thank you. Next, we'll have Meredith Muller, followed by Mike Sodergrin.
Hello. My name is Meredith Muller. I'm a resident, eight-thirty-nine Shealy Avenue. I'm a local educator. I am strongly in favor of creating the Shealy-Alameda Park City Landmark District. My family has owned the home that I live in since nineteen eighty, when the house was ninety years old. It's one hundred and thirty-four years old now. I know that some of my neighbors do not agree with the historic landmark designation. However, I am not swayed by their arguments. My home is a duplex, which I have recently renovated and rented. And, oh, sorry. And I am currently applying to build an ADU. I had a meeting with the ADU office just yesterday, and they said that the historic designation would have minimal to no impact on my ADU plans, which would further increase the occupancy on the property. I have restored many aspects of my home myself and do not find the fixtures, fittings, walls, or utilities burdensome. In fact, I hired a windowwright to restore my windows, and it was cheaper than installing new vinyl windows. I... The cost to maintain and comfortably dwell in a home that is old is not so different from the home that is newer. PG&E tells me that my bill is lower than many of my neighbors, and historic homes tend to be well-built and well-designed. I am grateful to be surrounded with craftsmanship and durable materials. I am proud to live in a neighborhood that values community and one which has shared resources like beautiful old trees on our streets. I consider the beauty of my neighborhood to greatly add to my quality of life. Because these homes were built before modern car dependency, they create a walkable, livable, and socially inviting environment, which many cities, including San Jose, are desperate to replicate. I believe that some people have deeply felt concerns over the racial and classist implications of historic districting and that this is misleading. Our neighborhood has a rich LGBTQ+ history, as well as being yellow-lined during the mortgage lending practice.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Mike Sodergrin, followed by Joanne Buckley.
Hi, Commissioners. Mike Sodergrin, PAC San Jose. I'll just add a couple of comments. I'd read something earlier in the day in the memorandum that was supplied in the public domain, that there's an overlap with the DSEP. The most recent version of the DSEP has no overlap with this particular project area. Affordable housing, as was stated by one of the other speakers, is your existing housing. We know how hard it is to produce affordable housing, and certainly, you don't want to lose that which you have. It's our belief that anybody that wants to add an ADU or any other expansion of their home for the benefit of additional people living should not have difficulty doing that. There's a lot of fear that we hear, not just this project, of other projects, about the negative impact of landmarking. But I think the positive impact is the value of the property. We see, time after time, when somebody does get landmark status, it does open up grant opportunities. It does open up opportunities potentially for a Melzac on an individual housing basis. And it's just a matter of pride. You have something that is really distinctive that you're maintaining as part of that. So anyway, it would be our recommendation that we follow council's recommendation, which is to establish a landmark in this particular location. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Joanne Buckley, followed by Susan Watanabe.
My name is Susan Watanabe, and I moved into Shealy Avenue in nineteen eighty-three. And we wanted me to be able to be home with my kids, so we lived on a very, very limited income for a long time. We have tried hard to be stewards of our house and respect its qualities as an old house, and it did not cost us a lot of money. We didn't have a lot of money. There's ways to keep the house up. You don't... It doesn't have to be expensive. But, and I forgot to say, I am for the designation as a historic district. We also just feel like we want to be stewards of the neighborhood as a whole, too. And as was mentioned before, we are right on the border of the downtown. So, well, of course, as many historic areas are. We are in danger because of that. I know a lot of people think that old houses should just be taken down, but I feel that history is very, very important. It's the reason I go visit other places. It's what I want to see. I want to go. I want to see what they have, that I can take a tour of this old. Let's not tear down... What we have is history, that we're not going to get any more historic neighborhoods. They're not going to be built. And also, we're not going to be stopped, as I'm sure you know, from adding on or gutting the inside of our house to change how it's laid out so we can add another bathroom. We're not stopped from that. We just need to keep the character the same. This is what we're trying to preserve. We're trying to keep the neighborhood from being knocked down and disappearing as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Susan Watanabe, and then I have a card here with no name. So if anyone else would like to give public comment, feel free to also come down to the podium at this time.
I'm Joanne Buckley, and I live at eight-five-eight Harding Avenue in the garden Alameda that's under designation right now. We have the dubious distinction of being the only neighborhood applying for a preservation that has gone for twenty years trying to get this. And a lot of it had to do with economics, when the city didn't have the money they needed to have a preservation office, but it goes on and on and on. So we're finally here, and it's been a hard fight. I bought my house in nineteen seventy-two because I fell in love with the neighborhood. It's just beautiful. I would hope all of you have an opportunity, before you make a decision, that you go to these neighborhoods and see how they are. I can tell you, from when I first lived there until now, the whole neighborhood has improved two hundred percent. People that come there, they respect what they see, and the gardens, the streets, the ambiance, the friendships have all gotten better because of this community feeling, and it's a wonderful place to live. I just hope that you all consider this very seriously and adopt this measure, and we'll be very happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes all of the speaker cards that I have here. But if there's anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on this item, please do come down to the podium at this time.
Hey, hello, everyone. So my name's Feng Qi. I bought a house there on Pershing Avenue two years ago. So, I mean, I like the neighborhood being maintained that way. It looks good, but I just feel like the way the restrictions, it's... I really kind of give us a hard time to maintain, because my house was passed by the owner who owned it for twenty-three years, whatever, but my whole window was broken when I have it. And I tried to apply the permit for like two years, back and forth, and I still didn't get a chance to replace my window, because the requirement is to be exactly the same. And for those historical windows, to maintain it, it's like fifteen to twenty thousand apiece, which is no way we can afford it. And the point is, the rainy season is coming, and if it's not allowed, my whole house got flooded. And, I mean, my front door got flooded, and I just feel like, yeah, it's a great proposal, but who will be responsible for the cost burden to maintain it? It cannot be all on the residents. Well, on my end, when I bought it, I don't even know there is a thing on that. And, yeah, so I feel it's a great proposal, but it needs to be some modifications, whatever, to make it more reasonable and feasible for the residents over there to also maintain the house, but not a unreasonable amount. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide... Oh, feel free to come down. Thank you. Oh, sorry. If you've already spoken, it is unfortunately just one public comment. Unfortunately, now the time has passed. Thank you. If there are any other members who have not already spoken, please feel free to come down. Okay. Not seeing anyone else move forward, so we will turn it back to the commission for discussion. All right. Couple people in the speaker list here. I have Commissioner Cantrell, and then followed by Commissioner Young. So we'll start with Vice Chair Cantrell.
First, I want to say thank you so much for showing up here. This is the part of this work that I really enjoy, because when people care, we should all care a little bit more. When people don't care and they don't show up, we just make decisions that are based on what we believe to be true and believe to understand. So thank you for coming. I have some thoughts or some perspective, or some things I'd like to know. So I'll share this. I think we have to ask ourselves, what is worth saving? What's worth protecting? And at what cost? And to who? We also have to decide and understand who makes these decisions. Is it governmental bodies, or is it people? And what are the unforeseen impacts? So we have to guess. We have to try to understand some things. So I do have a concern or a question. First off, I want to thank whoever wrote that report. It was fun to read. I really enjoyed it. It was a great perspective on history. But what it did point out is the impact of redlining and why this community exists. This was a redlined community, essentially. This was a community developed for people who could not live in other areas. This was a community developed for people who could not live in other areas. This community has somehow managed to sustain that in some regard and become even more diverse. I love data, I love census data. This was a little out of date, but still relevant. It had a significant number of concentration of African Americans, something we don't quite often see in San Jose. There's something there, there's a there there for me. My question is for city staff, did we evaluate the unforeseen potential impacts? Did we look at what it might cost for people to stay in their homes? And how that might impact the diversity of what I will call a gem of a community? Only thing that's missing is a park in closer proximity. Did we consider that?
It's not evaluated in the report. As Ben with PAC SJ said, how historic districts are, how the character is maintained is through design review, which is a permit process. The city council has mandated that our, the planning department be cost recovery, so we do charge what it costs to process those permits. You know, one thing that council could consider would be to reduce or eliminate the fees as an incentive for historic preservation. We don't currently have that, but that's certainly something that council could consider. We do have design guidelines to be able to guide the change. I think as one speaker said, it depends on what you want to do. You know, if you want to spend a lot of money and replace all your windows, you know, that's going to cost a fair amount of money. But there's lots of guidance about how to repair your windows, maintain your windows, to insulate your house and, you know, make things weatherproofed. I think, I believe, one speaker said that she had a window guy, so that's great information to know. But I think it depends on, you know, the impact, depends on what you want to do and how much money you want to spend, how much work you want to do on your house. That's sort of elective. Nothing's required in terms of, you know, process or work, you know, for being a designated landmark.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Actually, I would actually like to consider sending that message to council to, at least the city's portion of the fees could be at least mitigated in some way. Thank you for the idea, it's a great idea. The last thing I'll say is, I live in a gardener community, and it's a community of, a history of working-class people, living now multi-generational, but it is changing. It is becoming more and more gentrified, and that happens everywhere, and I don't know a way to prevent that. I think, in my humble, honest opinion, the best way to save the diversity and the beauty of this community is to protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Commissioner Bondal, followed by Commissioner Lourdes Noa. I'm sorry, you disappeared from my list here. We will go to Commissioner Young, then Commissioner Bondal, then Commissioner Lourdes Noa, and Commissioner Bigford.
Great, thank you Chair. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Cantrell said. Thank you so much for being here. You took time out of your day and your night to come in and talk to us, and that means a lot. And we received at least one email that I read that was very comprehensive, I appreciate that, too. I actually drove through the neighborhood on the way here. One of the cool things about being on this commission is I learned things about the city. I had never been in that neighborhood. I've been in the Rose Garden and Shasta Hansett numerous times, but this neighborhood is really unique, very unique. I would encourage my colleagues to take a walk. I wanted to take a walk, but I ran out of time because of the traffic, but anyway. It's very unique. There's a number of small bungalows, there's smaller craftsmen homes. It's very, very, I've never seen a neighborhood like that in San Jose. And I drove down Harding Avenue, and smack in the middle of all these beautiful, small cottages and homes is a very large rectangular-shaped two-story house. And I said, now I get it, right? That person built the house, they had a right to build it because this was not a historical district, so I understand the need, but I also understand the concern from the residents because I, you know, we just put windows in our house, and it was really expensive, so I get that. So I have some questions for staff, some specific questions. Okay, so what is the process if a homeowner wanted to, say, replace a window? As the, one of the speakers talked about, a large playglass window. What's the process that they go through to do that? If, under, if the historic designation was passed, what would the process be?
Well, as I said at the beginning of the presentation, the district is currently listed on the Historic Resources Inventory as a candidate area. So it currently requires a single-family house permit for changes. So what this proposal would do would basically be to switch the types of permits that are required from the single-family house permit to the historic preservation permit. For windows, we would probably handle that on the staff level, which is an administrative permit. If there are no changes to openings, then that would just be the historic preservation permit adjustment. They don't need a building permit for just keeping existing openings.
Okay. What would the cost of a building permit be for, let's say, a big playglass window?
I don't know what the cost for building permit is.
Somebody on staff know that?
I don't know the exact cost, but the building permit would remain the same. I think the difference is there's an additional layer of getting a planning permit to review the design and the historic that would be differentiating between a building permit for another project for a window versus a historic. It's not the building permit fee that changes.
Okay. To be honest, I don't understand that explanation.
No, no, so what I'm saying is, it doesn't change the fee for the building permit. Either one, they both have to get a building permit. They don't examine the historic. If this is an historic district, they may have to do a planning historic district adjustment where planning staff would examine the design of the historic. So that's the additional fee. Dana can probably tell you about that additional fee, but as far as the relevance of the building permit fee, it's the same either way for a historic building or a non-historic. They don't evaluate the historic.
Excuse me, excuse me.
If we could limit commentary from the public, thank you.
Another question, John, is, so the permit processing time, say for a replacement of a large window, would it be longer, the same?
Dana processes more than I do, but there is an additional layer, but it is an administrative permit, it doesn't go through a hearing, so I'll defer to Dana, who's probably done a couple more of the reviews than I have.
It really depends on our volume and our staff resources. So we have a queue for, no matter pretty much what anybody applies for, whether it's a building permit or a land use permit or a planning permit. We only have so many resources that were allocated for staff. So the time really depends on, you know, how long, where the people are on the queue. We also have, we also have a lot of applications that are submitted by designers that are not necessarily familiar with the process, so they may not submit things that are needed, and that takes a lot more time. We're also dependent, when we comment on something, for somebody to submit it back on a, you know, in a timely manner, and sometimes months go by before things are submitted back to us, and so it appears that things take a long time when in fact we may be waiting for a resubmital.
Yeah, no, I understand, and believe me, I'm not criticizing the city's permitting process. I know that you're very limited on staff. My only question was, will this designation add significant time if somebody wanted to replace a door or a window? Would it be significantly longer than if I wanted to replace a window on my non-historical home?
As I said, currently there's a single-family house permit required. There's a whole write-up of findings that are required for that, so that's probably a longer process now than for the historic preservation permit adjustment if it were just a door or a window, which depending on how fast we can take it in and get the invoice paid, it should only take a couple of weeks to process that.
Okay, okay. Let's see. So I'm not really familiar with historic preservation. I know the Mills Act has been brought up, both in an email and tonight, so could you explain for the Commission what the Mills Act is and how it would be triggered or affected by this designation?
Well, it's applicable to designated city landmarks, so where there are properties in the district that have been identified as a potential candidate city landmark, which would be an individual significance, those properties could apply for landmark designation and for a Mills Act contract. A Mills Act contract basically provides a property tax reduction up to 50%, depending on when you've purchased your property, so it's more effective or useful for people who have just bought rather than one of the homeowners who bought in '72, they're going to have such a low tax base, it's not going to make any difference anyways, but, so it's basically a tax, a property tax break for, in exchange for preserving the house.
Okay, and for these residents to be able to take advantage of that, would the designation help them qualify for that?
It could, because we've done a lot of documentation already for the district. Each property has a, has been recorded and has a what we call DPR form, which is a documentation evaluation for each property. And there have been some properties that have been identified as candidate city landmarks, so we have that information. We probably would need a little bit more additional evaluation, you know, for the landmark designation, but, you know, it certainly brings them farther along.
Okay, so say on a million and a half dollar house, I'm not sure what the value of the homes are, that would typically have a $15,000 year property tax approximately. So if they apply and qualify for the Mills Act, that's a $7,500 per year savings, correct?
Well, the property taxes are assessed by the county, so this, it's up to the county assessor, you know, they have it on their website, they have a whole formula about how they do it, and it's a little bit mind-blowing, but potentially up to 50%.
Okay. That's a significant savings, I'll point out. What are the lot sizes in the neighborhood of the 130 lots?
I think most of them are approximately 6,000 square feet.
I'm sorry?
Most of them are approximately 6,000.
6,000, okay.
They're not huge lots.
Okay. And just want to confirm, I think it's been said, but, so the ability to add an ADU to the property is not affected by this designation, correct?
It's a ministerial process, so we don't look at those at all.
Right, okay. Okay, great. So I will just kind of echo Commissioner Cantrell. I think that I'm in favor of protecting this neighborhood. I think it's very unique, very interesting, and an important part of our city's history. I appreciate Commissioner Cantrell sharing about the African-American families that lived there. That's very cool. So I'll, with that, I'll close, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Commissioner Bondal, and then Commissioner Lourdes Noa.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation, and thank you, everybody, for being here today, and I appreciate everyone's time and effort. Your voices have been heard. So as we're constantly busy focused on the future of the city, I think it's a breath of fresh air considering the history of the city as well. Like Commissioner Young, I wasn't able to go and see the community myself, but I did take a look at it on Google Maps, and it's a beautiful piece of town, so. I do have a question for staff. After looking at the memorandum, I'm just curious about the size of the preservation. It mentions 132 units and 25 acres. When preserving the city and keeping a landmark, do we really need this size of, you know, 25 acres to preserve to kind of keep that image from the past? I know how important it is, but I'm just, I'm not leaning one way or another, I'm just trying to get a good grip of why can't we just do one block, or how do we come up with the 25 acres?
This could potentially be a question for the consultant, but the boundaries are determined based on its historic development. So these two subdivisions were intertwined in their development. It began with the Shealy subdivision in the late 1880s. If you've read the report, he later went bankrupt trying to do all of the infrastructure. We also had an economic downfall, I think in 1894, where there was a panic, and that's basically where he lost all of his money, too, and he ended up dying broke, I think. But anyways, another developer came in after World War I, I believe, and integrated some of the streets and made the parents of it consistent with streets and trees and stuff like that. But, so that's why the boundaries are drawn the way they are. Certainly, you know, the council could look at just the Shealy subdivision, but it wasn't actually all built out before he died. That was, that was done, I think there might have been an interim person or two before Maderas came in to develop the second part, which is the Alameda Park area. So they're just historically intertwined, which is sort of difficult to just change, you have to have some sort of justification for the boundaries.
Okay, and I had another question on the Mills Act. You mentioned that it's 50% less property taxes, correct?
Up to, but again, it's calculated by the Santa Clara County Assessor's Office.
Okay, and in the Mills Act, if, would that just protect the homeowners currently? Or if a new person was supposed to come in and buy, would they be protected on the Mills Act, or how does that actually work?
Contracts, that's actually state law that the city has opted into, but they're rolling contracts, they're 10-year contracts that roll into time. So every year, there, that a year goes by, a new year is added on because they're renewed automatically unless they get non-renewed, and then they roll out and, you know, basically go backwards, but, and it does transfer with property.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Commissioner Lourdes Noa next, followed by Commissioner Bigford, myself, and then Commissioner Rosario.
Thank you, Chair Tortius. Can you hear me all right? I know this is kind of weird with one person on Zoom.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so this has been a really interesting thing to read up on. I spent a lot of time with the staff report and with the district record report that was prepared by the consultant. I read through the public comment. And I guess with all of that and with hearing the staff report, I've yet to see really a clear articulation of what is the historic value that we're preserving here, or why that is, we're being proposed to be preserved. You know, in the, in the staff report and the district record report, it cites, you know, as we've discussed, that about half of the neighborhood was built in the 1880s and the other half in the 1940s. And the page three of the district record report says, in terms of the architectural historical value, the houses have form and detailing reflective of this broad period that ranged from the Victorian-era styles of the late 19th century, arts and crafts-inspired construction of the early 20th century, and to the revival styles of the years between the two world wars. And I also did not have the chance to visit the neighborhood in person, because I've been out of town, but it seems from looking at Google Maps that the style varies a lot from home to home as you move down the street. So on the city's webpage for this proposed historic district, there's this section, what is the historic district? And I just want to read from it, because I think it's kind of illuminating in terms of how we should evaluate, how, you know, whether this is an appropriate designation to grant or not. It says, "A historic district is a formally designated group of buildings, usually composed of a contiguous grouping of structures. These structures often share a common development history. They may have been part of a single development tract." I don't, I mean, the legal definition of tract, perhaps, but as noted, this was, different parts of this were constructed at very disparate times. It also says, lost my place here, "have a well-defined period of construction." As mentioned, the construction period ranges over a period of 60 years, which is quite a significant chunk of San Jose's history. It's not really just a single historical period. Or are, you know, "Have a well-defined architectural style." Again, there's at least three different architectural styles on display here. Um, "Have consistent design elements such as a planned street pattern or uniform setback, or relate to a significant cultural event or movement." And again, I don't, I haven't seen articulated, um, a significant cultural event or movement related to this neighborhood. Um, and another element that's cited in the staff report on page four, it says that it represents an earlier sense of time and place reflective of residential development in the outer reaches of San Jose between 1888 and 1941. And I, I, I don't find that, that convincing either because really all construction is reflective of its period. Um, architectural trends change, regulations change, um, land use needs change, what materials and designs or economical change, and that's always going to be reflected in what you build. Um, I mean, the neighborhood I live in now is very reflective of construction in the early 2000s. The neighborhood I lived in previously, very reflective of construction in the 1960s. I don't know if that necessarily qualifies either for historic preservation. Um, and I also, I want to highlight some of the concerns that have been articulated by the public. Uh, San Jose Spotlight did an article on this proposal, published May 7th of this year. I want to quote, Art Saldana, who's lived in his Victorian home for about 10 years, said the neighborhood is diverse, but Saldana told San Jose Spotlight, he objects to the historical designation because it would limit his ability to make exterior changes. We got a public comment letter today from Lori Catch. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, um, who expressed concerns on the economic impact of homeowners, if there's additional restrictions on what materials can be used in renovations. Kelly Snyder sent us a letter and gave a public comment tonight. Uh, she lives in the district and was concerned about that the homes are small by modern standards and that this designation could limit expansion. And also that because of the period of construction, a lot of these homes have led pain and asbestos, and also that this could make it more expensive to mitigate those issues. Um, and then we also had several public comments tonight that expressed similar concerns to all of those. Um, I think we should be very hesitant to impose additional restrictions on how homeowners can use their property. And um, Vice Chair Cantrell, I I apologize if I misunderstood your comment, but I think what you were saying is the city should look into helping to offset the, you know, fees and the financial impacts that would be caused by granting this designation. Um, I think if that's a concern, then maybe that's a point against not doing it, um, if we think that it's going to have that negative impact on people who live there. So I guess, you know, it's been established that this neighborhood was built a long time ago and that it's beautiful. Um, I, you know, having, again, not been there in person but seen it, it is a very gorgeous neighborhood. Um, but age and aesthetics alone don't war, warrant historic preservation. Um, and I also want to talk about the context of historic preservation in the current day and, you know, the issues we're facing overall as a city and as a society. Um, we're in a housing shortage and a housing crisis. I mean, just last week, former President Obama and Vice President Harris both emphasized that really strongly. And um, you know, as part of addressing that, our state legislature has enacted, enacted a lot of laws to streamline the building of new housing in the state. And a lot of those laws have exemptions for historic districts. And that's a good thing because, you know, the need to build new housing shouldn't undermine the goal of historic preservation. But that does have the effect of historic districts can be a tool to undermine the production of new housing. Now, I don't see any indication that that's the intent here. Um, I, you know, don't want to cast any aspersions, but I want us to be mindful of one, the impact that the establishment of a historic district will have on this neighborhood's future, but also the precedent it's going to create citywide. I mean, we have a lot of neighborhoods in San Jose that are old and beautiful, a lot that are very similar to this neighborhood. Um, but if we make it out the standard, I mean, that's a standard that virtually all neighborhoods meet. So in short, you know, as, I apologize for the long comment, but I put a lot of thought into this, really studied um, the information we were given, and I don't think that a historic designation is appropriate for this neighborhood. I want to make a motion that we recommend to city council to not establish a historic district.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Lourdes Wa to essentially reject the staff recommendation, recommend to city council that they not move forward with this designation with a second from Commissioner Rosario. Uh, we have multiple hands still here, uh, so we will continue the discussion and keep that motion on the table. Uh, next up, we have Commissioner Bickford, followed by myself, uh, Commissioner Cantrell and Commissioner Rosario.
Thank you. I have two observations. The, the first one is as stewards of San Jose, we have a challenge because we want affordable housing. We want beautiful neighborhoods. We want places where people can be at home and comfortable. And we also want places that are affordable. We want density. We want access to public transit, and we want it at low cost. I know this neighborhood. I have friends who live there. It's beautiful. I'm jealous. I live in a condo. I think that there is some obligation, some responsibility for San Jose to say, we have a rich and diverse history and we should support it. I looked at that big crazy house that was built in the middle of all of those little bungalows, and it frankly looks ridiculous. And I aesthetically find it not in keeping with the neighborhood, but it's there. I'm sure there are wonderful people that, that own the home. And so the question for me is, where is the balance between having a neighborhood that retains its historic appeal and not having a guy wait two years to try to get a permit to replace a window? And that, I feel like, is the challenge that this commission is, is facing. And there are great arguments on both sides. And yet I can't find it in myself to agree to put further restrictions on when I recognize that for myself as a homeowner, I would, if I owned one of these houses, retain its appeal and retain its culture, and you wouldn't have to restrict me in order to get me to do that. So I'm not sure where it leaves us, but I'm agreeing with my colleagues that I don't want to restrict homeowners in that way, although I do fully support trying to maintain the culture and the history of these things that we've built in San Jose because they're important. Just my observation. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of my commissioners here for what has been a really robust conversation, and thank you to all of the members of the public who've come out to speak on this as well. I think this is a challenging item, you know. In a very real sense, there are reasons to value historic preservation and valid reasons to create historic districts. At the same time, this, you know, designation would create new burdens and new restrictions on existing homeowners. And based on just the folks who have come out and the people who have sent letters into the commission, it seems clear to me that there isn't 100% at least alignment amongst the existing people who would actually be bearing the brunt of these restrictions. So, you know, this is challenging. Um, when I look at this, the thing that really sticks out to me and was called out by a couple of comments is the proximity to downtown. I have walked through this neighborhood. It is a beautiful neighborhood, but it's also a neighborhood that is a five-minute bike ride and a 15-minute walk to Deardon Station. I know there were comments that said, you know, this will not freeze in amber, this neighborhood. There will still be development, but I think it is safe to assume that if we were to proceed with this designation, that development would be limited and slowed. Whether that's Yes, and more costly. Uh, whether that's at the individual, you know, home level with an addition, a second story, an attached ADU, or if it's, you know, more wide-ranging, uh, infill projects. We've already heard that, uh, this would remove these 132 homes from eligibility for SB 9. Uh, and, you know, given the proximity to transit and jobs here, I personally think that this neighborhood could be a good candidate for the city's small multifamily housing program that's been called out and identified in the housing element. It is tricky, though. I am sympathetic to, you know, the goals of historic preservation. I actually live in a historic home myself, in a city landmark district. I am very thankful that that home was not demolished alongside, you know, many other historic homes that have been over the years. That said, I've also seen firsthand, as we are, you know, embarking on some renovations, how complicated the historic preservation permit process can be and how costly replacing windows with wood-framed, historically accurate windows can be. And I'm sensitive to, you know, putting those costs onto homeowners who may not agree that a historic district is the right way to go about this pres, uh, preservation. You know, there've been a lot of different opinions voiced here, and it's clear that, you know, the challenge that we face is that the city has a bunch of different goals, and sometimes those goals conflict. If you look at the general plan, historic preservation is in there, and I do think that this neighborhood checks a lot of the boxes that are in the general plan when it comes to creation of historic districts and preservation of these homes. That said, there's other goals that I think that this designation would actively work against. Uh, I was looking through the environmental sustainability chapter in the general plan. And goal, uh, MS 2.9 says, "Help homeowners improve the energy efficiency of new and existing buildings." And goal, MS 1.7 says, "Encourage retrofits of existing buildings throughout San Jose to use green building principles." I think that if we are adding new restrictions, making it more costly, putting limitations on adding energy-efficient windows, you know, that directly works against that specific goal. If we turn to, you know, some of the text in the general plan around infill growth, um, goal LU 10.3 says, "Develop residential lands adjacent to major transit facilities at high densities to reduce motor vehicle travel by encouraging public transit." And goal LU 10.5 says, "Facilitate development of housing close to jobs." Again, I think that if we are limiting the growth within this neighborhood in such a severe manner, it directly impacts these other goals that are also important to the city in the long term. But this is a complicated question, as I've said. I thought there was something really interesting in the historic report, which was that when the subdivision was created, there was an existing beautiful, large Victorian home that was moved off-site and then eventually demolished to make way for these homes, which we now consider historic and worthy of preservation. And that, to me, was like a little, you know, lesson that cities grow and they change, and the standards for what should be preserved, what is historic, and the degree to which we should go to, you know, different lengths for that preservation change over time. For me, I think this feels like a little bit of a heavy-handed approach to this type of preservation. You know, if we imagine, you know, 20, 30, 50 years down the line, California High Speed Rail has finally been completed, the BART station is open and serving downtown, we have the airport connector. You know, the Deardon Station area plan has been completed, and we have millions of new square feet of uses, residential office all around this area. Having a tiny little neighborhood, a five-minute bike ride away, that's still mostly composed of 200-year-old at that point, you know, 900-square-feet bungalows, doesn't feel to me like responsible stewardship of the land and responsible land use planning. So for me, I think that I would prefer an approach that was maybe more at the structure level. You know, working with property owners to do Mills Act contracts, to preserve structures that we think have independent historic merit outside of the district itself. I think that's the approach that makes most sense to me, given all of the other factors here. Uh, so I'm also inclined to support the motion to recommend against designation here. Thank you. Uh, and next up, we will go to Commissioner Cantrell and then Commissioner Rosario. I think you are right, sorry. Still getting used to the screen. Uh, Commissioner Rosario, you're up.
Uh, thank you. I also would like to thank everybody that has come out. I know it takes time out of your day, et cetera. Um, I have a question for staff. Is, is this, um, have you not analyzed how this would impact the jobs-to-employment ratio?
The findings in the Historic Preservation Ordinance for creating a district don't consider that. Um, that's certainly something that could be analyzed, but the finding that the council's charged to make is based on, you know, its history and significance.
And at the current point in time, the Google project, their Downtown West is still being planned, right? It's still supposed to at least one day come.
Yes, it is. It has an active permit on the site, yes.
And even if Google doesn't come, there could be potentially another large campus there at some point in time.
They have a development agreement that they have the right to develop the campus, so that would depend on how that contract works out in the entitlement. But the city currently hopes that there will be a, a office and other developments in that area.
Thanks. Um, so I, the way I see it is very similar to Commissioner Lourdes Wa, um, and similar to Chair Torrios. I think we want to make a city that is going to, that 50 years from now, 75 years from now is going to allow many more people to live here. This location, although not part of the downtown plan, I think it's right on the border on Stockton, right? So, and then it, like you mentioned, is a 10-minute walk to, 15-minute walk to the Deardon Station, which is going to have high-speed rail, which is going to have uh, the BART, which we worked for, which we also worked many, 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 many years to get here. I'm not very happy about the few houses, single-family houses that are being built or that are planned to be built next to the BART station in Berriessa. And this seems to be just a very similar situation. I do think that this area should eventually be upzoned. I think it's going to be right next to, you know, that intersection right now, there where you have, what, it was a Togo's and there's like a gym or a weight store or something like that. That's going to be completely different in 50 years, completely different. It's a plan, it's a planned growth area. And when I look at the general plan, it seems like the things that the general plan is trying to push the city towards, you know, becoming this world, you know, this large city that's attractive all over the world, I think we're going to need freedom to be able to build high-density housing near transportation. I think that's what we want to do as a city. That's what's been pushed, and I don't think limiting that is the way to achieve those goals.
Thank you. And next up, we have Vice Chair Cantrell and then Commissioner Young.
So I just, I just want to say a few things. I, I really respect and appreciate everybody's perspective here. There are differing, and this is a very difficult thing to, to have in front of us. I get that for sure. Um, I just want us to consider a few things. Uh, some things about humanity, uh, that have taken place in this community. What happens when the oppressed survive and thrive? What happens when those who are marginalized maintain a way of life in an area that they've helped to build and create and survive? Where else can we go to walk through the history of our city in one location? What if we decided places like Stonewall could be a supermarket instead of a landmark that's pretty new? What is worth protecting again? San Jose is very large and very flat. 25 acres is not a significant amount of land, let's be frank. When we look at this district, this is a relatively small amount of our real estate within our city. When we consider things like high-speed rail, I live in a community that will be significantly impacted by high-speed rail. Detrimental. Some homes will literally be directly across a very small street from those tracks and trains moving at high speed. If this was, if my community was a historical district, it wouldn't be a question, would it? Progress has impacts. These impacts can be born in other areas. You're right, this is beautiful. It's within walking distance, but there are survivors there who are entitled to the beauty of their community as it stands. I'd like us to consider the humanity of that. This is a very large city. There'll be a lot of development not very far away. There'll be a lot of development, not very far away at some point. Do we have to pave over everything? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Commissioner Young, followed by Commissioner Oliverio.
I was going to defer to Commissioner Oliverio if you'd like to speak first, because you haven't had a chance.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Thank you, Chair. So what we're doing tonight is not, and not anything new. The city has had historic areas, conservation area, historic districts through, for a long time, and we have a variety of processes to get here. And what we have is a community that has worked to get there for far too long. I'm sorry that politics got in the way of delaying this even further when it was fairly simple. At the end of the day, you know, we talk about historic resources from time to time. We just talked about the property on Sealy and Montague Expressway when it came to the Japanese agricultural family, and we spent a lot of time talking about structures, and even though the family didn't want to save it, et cetera. But then you have these opportunities with historic districts, and we all know them, and you don't always know them in San Jose. Maybe you know them when you travel and you go somewhere and you walk through this really interesting neighborhood, whether it's in Europe, back east, wherever. And what's neat is you've preserved a certain era of structures, and that's what provides a high value. We're talking about 1/10th of 1% or less of the city's housing stock. If other neighborhoods across the city are going to organize for 20 years to avoid onerous state laws, that's a big process to get there. So I don't think that is really going to come forward. Ultimately, we know through the questions and the dialogue from everyone on this commission that people will still be able to do their landscaping, they'll be able to paint, they'll be able to remodel their kitchen and bathroom, all these different things. And yes, there'll be a different little step on retaining a window. I remember I replaced my windows with vinyl. I regret it, you know? I mean, what was I thinking? But, you know, that was a thing at the time, and I don't, don't live in what's a qualified historic home, but, you know, these are decisions you make at one point and the other. And, but, you know, everyone has their choice, right? And the fact of the matter is, people choose these neighborhoods in a higher proportion to other neighborhoods, because they are highly sought after, because they are unique in character. And future homeowners are going to value this neighborhood amongst other preserved neighborhoods in San Jose because of their character. So I see it as a way of people self-selecting what they want. So ultimately, and I think also, our general plan 2040, as it exists today, preserves single-family home neighborhoods, because the idea was that we were going to build in a thoughtful manner in the downtown, along fixed rail, along other major transportation corridors, and we essentially had put a bubble over single-family home neighborhoods because we wanted to gain the support of the San Joseans to support higher density and higher population for the city rather than them to be opposed. Now, state law has changed that, and whether or not those state laws remain in effect, time will tell, but that's, that's the matter of where we are with the general plan. So ultimately, I can't support the motion. I think we should, you know, we thank people for coming to the meetings, but then we go, "Oh, sorry, you spent 20 years working on this thing?" I'm going to deny it. Because if you're going to deny it, deny it at the beginning. But the city has never denied it, because the fact is, we've promoted the concept of people coming forward and making their neighborhoods historic in the city. And that's, that's where it is. So I can't support the motion. In fact, I'll make a substitute motion to support the staff recommendation.
Second. Okay.
All right. I think we have a substitute motion to support the staff recommendation from Commissioner Oliverio, and I believe the second was Commissioner Young. Okay, we will keep that motion on the table, and then Commissioner Young, did you also have further comments?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Oliverio, I wonder if you might be open to a friendly amendment?
Do tell.
If we could recommend to the council that they waive permit fees for folks that need to do renovations in this district.
I would certainly incorporate as part of the motion that the city council make a recommendation to lessen or eliminate historic fees in all historic neighborhoods across the city.
Great, thank you. I think Commissioner Oliverio was very eloquent and said a lot of the things I wanted to say, but I'll just chime in. We're talking about 130 lots here, folks, in a, in a city of a million people. I'm probably one of the biggest proponents of housing on this commission. I have been ever since I've been here. I'm, I'm in support of the state laws, I'm in support of the ministerial process, we need more housing. But we're talking about a neighborhood that is really special and that has had an effort for 20 years to, to get this designation. And I just, I don't know. I, it would break my heart to see, to see this neighborhood turn into, you know, a number of triplexes or duplexes or whatever. It just, maybe it'll happen down the road, but I, you know, I, I think in San Jose, we don't have a lot of history like other cities do. You know, Commissioner Oliverio mentioned when you walk through Europe or back east, there's a lot of history. We don't have that much history. We're a pretty new city, but, so I think it's even more important for us to preserve this.
Respectfully, no comments from the crowd, thank you. This is not the time for public comment. This, please, this is not the time for public comment, thank you.
So, excuse me.
Again, this is not the time for public comment.
Excuse me, I listened while you were speaking. Please give me the respect to listen while I'm speaking. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I think this is important. It really, I understand there's competing interests, I understand the folks that own the homes may not want the restrictions, but, you know, this commission and the council is all about trying to weigh competing interests, and I, I think the interest in this case is to preserve some really important history of our city. So I'll be in support of the substitute motion. I am also sensitive to the, to the residents and the cost of, of doing improvements and such, which is why my recommendation would be to the city council to find some way to help you all out when you need to do that by waiving the fees. So, yeah, I'll stop with that, thanks.
Thank you. Please, we cannot have any additional public comment at this time, thank you. Next up on the list is Commissioner Rosario.
I, I just wanted to make clear that I am not against historic districts. I'm not, you know, I think that we should encourage the preservation of historic things in our city, but in this location, I mean, what, staff, how many people are projected to live in the city of San Jose in the year 2050? Or roughly, whatever numbers you have, John?
I'm trying to remember, but I think when we adopted the general plan in 2011.
1.4 if the general plan is built out as today.
Yeah, I was, yeah. It was estimated about another 400,000, yeah, when it was adopted.
And so, just to be clear, I have nothing against historic districts, everything like that, but where are folks going to live? And I think the goal is to have them live in places near transit, near downtown. We want the city to build up in its core areas. And that's why I'm not going to support this motion, but we need somewhere for folks to live. We want our kids to live in the city. We want our parents to be able to afford to not move out of the city. That's what I'm looking at.
Thank you. Over to Vice Chair Cantrell.
I promise, last thing I'll say, other than my vote. Yes, we would like to see the population grow. Unfortunately, it's been on decline. That's the fact. We planned for growth, and it is not happening at the rate that we would like. We're actually experiencing a contraction. We've lost our standing as the 10th-largest city. That's a fact of life. So doing this isn't going to change the dynamic. So I just want to be clear about that. I've lived in cities that are smaller than this, that have larger historic districts. It can be done, it can be done well. Yes, we want people to live near transit. These people live near transit. Yes, we want people to live in affordable housing. This stock is more affordable than more housing, most housing I know in my own community. That's a reality. You don't remove affordable housing to replace it with stacks of people living differently. That's not the recipe that anyone should want here. We want a variety of housing. We want a variety of living experiences. We want those who want a unique experience to have a unique experience that a historic district can provide. That's what we're after here. We're after a community of everyone. This is a very unique opportunity. We live in a community where the African-American community has been on decline for the last 30 years without fail. You have a community with a significant, very significant amount of African-Americans who have survived being marginalized, who have survived being cheated, who have survived being captive in a city that doesn't allow them to thrive. They're entitled to this. They're entitled to a historic designation that gives them the credit for the community that they have built. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one other thing that I would add is, I live in a historic home, as I mentioned, in a historic district. The parcel directly next to me is an apartment building. I personally do not feel that that detracts from the historic nature of our home or our neighborhood. I recognize that other people hold different perspectives, but I do think that you can visit cities all around the country and all around the world where new development sits alongside historic buildings. And the value of those historic buildings doesn't evaporate when that new development comes in. But again, acknowledge that there is multiple perspectives on that. The other thing that I'll say is that Vice Chair Cantrell is right, that over the past couple of years, San Jose has lost population. I think some of the latest census data shows that maybe we're starting to slow down on that front. Hopefully, we can turn it around. But I think, you know, part of the reason that we've lost population is the enormous cost of housing and the high cost of living, driven by a housing shortage. So part of the reason I joined the planning commission was the housing crisis. So I look very skeptically, I think, at proposals that would limit new development, especially when it is this close to transit and jobs. But that's all I'll say on that. I'm not seeing, we have one more hand from Commissioner Lardinois, and then another hand from Commissioner Young, and that's the end of the speaker list at the moment.
Thank you. So I want to, yeah, respond to some of the comments. So, you know, I brought up in my comments that it really hasn't been clearly articulated in the staff report or the consultant's report what the historic value is that's we're aiming to preserve here. And I think that's important, because, you know, as we've discussed, there are benefits and drawbacks of establishing a historic district, and I think, you know, we need to be very judicious with using, you know, with granting that status. And two things that were brought up, Commissioner, Vice, excuse me, Vice Chair Cantrell brought up the history of the African-American population in this neighborhood. And I think that is, you know, the kind of thing I would be looking for, for, you know, understanding what history we're trying to preserve here. But at the same time, historic preservation and establishing a historic district doesn't do anything to help keep current residents in their homes. And it's also not clear to me how preserving the structures in this neighborhood helps to document that particular history of it. And then also, you know, Commissioner Oliverio made the argument that the neighborhood, you know, that some folks in the neighborhood have been organizing for this for 20 years. Again, like, that some people want this, it's not an argument for there being a history to preserve. And also, I'll quote you, Commissioner Oliverio, that they want to avoid onerous state laws. That, again, is absolutely not the purpose of historic districts. That is something that some folks pursue a historic district to achieve that goal, but that is inappropriate use of the process. So I, again, I don't, that's the only time that that has come up in this meeting, that that's why folks want to do it, but that's not a reason to do it. So, and just, also, there was an argument that, you know, it's, this is one small neighborhood, that it's not going to have a huge impact on the city. I want to, again, go back to what I brought up, that there are many neighborhoods that are very similar to this neighborhood, and, you know, in terms of their age, or in terms of their character or their design, that may not have a strong argument for historic preservation, like I believe this neighborhood does not. And I, I think we should be mindful of the precedent that we would create. So while it is one small neighborhood, we need to be thinking about long-term, how does this apply to the whole city? And then also, I just want to address what Commissioner Rosario and Chair Tordeo said in response to the discussion about San Jose's declining population. I mean, absolutely, as was said, San Jose's population is declining because it is, by many measures, the most expensive place to live in the United States, and by some measures, the world. It's because of decades of failures to build housing to house people who live here and people who move here and people who want to live here. Again, we live in a country where people have the freedom to live wherever, and that creates supply and demand effects. And from a matter of public policy, all we can do is affect the supply. So San Jose is losing population, not because there's not a demand for housing, but because there is a much greater demand for housing than we are providing for. And that is something that California in general is seeing, we're losing population because people can't afford to live here, seeing that in Illinois, seeing that in New York. It's a public policy failure at every level, and so it is absolutely something that we need to address. And again, this particular discussion we're having is a very small part of that, but again, precedent, when we're establishing policies that limit the ability to use land to provide new housing, it's something we should keep in mind. So I still don't support my original motion, opposed to the substitute motion, but I want to say that with respect to all the opinions we've been hearing, because this is not an easy discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like the final hand we have in the speaking list is Commissioner Young.
Thank you. I, I want to ask you a question about something that I don't think has come up yet. I believe as part of this district, there is already a multifamily dwelling area, is that correct? The Parcal Alameda? I believe, is that the right name?
I don't believe there is. I think there might be one to the west of the lower part of the district, and there's a, a house that's sort of related, they've somehow purchased that property, so it's part of that land, but I don't think there are any in the district.
Okay.
But I, I could be wrong, but I don't think there are. The, I think the point that I want to make is that the general plan and the zoning currently, certainly that can be changed, is single-family zoning. So without that change, we wouldn't be able to do multifamily housing. But, and I did want to clarify that with regard to SB 9. We are, the citywide planning team is preparing design guidelines, objective standards to allow development to take advantage of SB 9 in historic districts in R2 areas. So that is something that we're currently working on.
Great, yeah. So I'll just wrap up. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners. One of the things I love about being on this commission is we're very collegial.
One of the things I love about being on this commission is we're very collegial, even when we disagree. I really appreciate that. That, that doesn't happen everywhere. I am not persuaded that this will establish a precedent. We're not setting a policy here. And as Commissioner Oliverio pointed out, it took 20 years to get here. So I am not concerned that we're setting some kind of precedent that, you know, that any other neighborhood in San Jose can come in and, and get a historic designation as, as a way to get out of more denser infill housing. I'm not concerned with that, especially with the composition of this commission and our city council. I don't think we and they would allow that to happen. So that's not persuasive to me. And I, I think that'll be my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional hands at this time. Over to the city attorney.
Yeah, just before you vote on the substitute motion first, just wanted to clarify a little bit for Commissioner Oliverio and the second Commissioner Young, that part of the responsibility the commission has is to accept the HLC, the Historic Landmark Commission's report, and consider their recommendations. So as part of the motion, just ask that you accept the report and consider the recommendations.
Sure, that was certainly inferred, so then that is what it is.
Thanks.
Thank you. In that case, we will move to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
I don't often get an opportunity to vote.
I'm sorry, could you specify exactly what we're voting on?
Okay.
Ah, yes. So this is a vote to accept the staff recommendation, which includes accepting the report from the Historic Landmarks Commission and passing along a recommendation to city council to grant the designation for the new historic district. Yes, and I believe it also included a note from Commissioner Young to recommend that city council look into waiving historic permit fees citywide as part of that process. Yes, Commissioner Barocia.
I think it was restated to eliminate or lessen the fees.
Eliminate or lessen.
Not just eliminate, yeah. And, and I think that allows for flexibility.
Thank you. Back over to Commissioner Cantrell.
Good. I don't often get an opportunity to, to do something like this, quite frankly. As an African American in this community, I am desperately concerned about the decline in African American population to now less than 3% of the population. And when I see a community that reflects such a significantly higher saturation of African Americans, I want to protect it. I am going to vote yes for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
No.
Commissioner Lardinois.
No.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
No.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, no. I believe that's five yes, four no, so the motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to item B.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, can, can I just ask that the vote be communicated to city council? And the, the diversity of opinion?
Yes, staff, can we make note of that in the report?
It certainly will.
Of course, the, both the recommendations of the HLC and the planning commission are about the report, so everything that was discussed, to provide input to the city council. So everything will be included.
And the vote's always included.
Thank you. We will now move to item B in the public hearing, which is the 2023 to 2024 annual compliance review of development agreements. Before I turn it over to staff for the presentation here, I wanted to note that I will need to recuse myself from any action on DA 21-001, the Downtown West Development Agreement, due to a conflict of interest from my employment at Google and ownership of Google stock. So I would request that we segment any action on DA 21-001, separate from the rest of the items in 5B, with a separate motion, discussion, and vote. And at this point, I would open the floor to any other commissioners who need to state conflict of interest statements or recusals for not just the Downtown West Agreement, but any other agreements in this item. Yes, Commissioner Bickford.
Yeah, I, I would just like to. Sorry. I, I need to recuse myself from both DA 15-002, the Apple Development, and DA 21-001, the Google Development.
Sorry, could you restate the number for the Apple Development?
That's DA 15-002.
Thank you. So I believe the procedure here is that we will have a single presentation from city staff, then we will take a vote on all of the certifications except for DA 15-002 and DA 21-001, and then we will proceed with those separately once the recusals are in place. Yes.
I need to recuse myself from the Google one also.
Okay, so we will have three recusals from Google and one from Apple. Oh, over to Commissioner Barocia.
Also for 21-001, Google, for myself.
Okay, so we will have four recusals on the Google Development Agreement and one on the Apple. Turning to city staff to see if that means anything in terms of quorum.
Sorry, I missed that.
We have four recusals on DA 21-001.
Should be okay.
Okay, so. Okay, so I'm hearing that we should be good in terms of quorum. Whether the motion passes is a separate discussion, I think. Okay, so we are good to go in terms of proceeding with that staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair. This is a Pat Kelly supervising planner and development review. This is a compliance review hearing for the six active DAs in the city, including Cisco in North San Jose, Shea Properties in Japantown, Apple in North San Jose, Hitachi Western Digital in South San Jose, Novellas Vista Montana Park Homes Equity Tasman Apartments in North San Jose, and Google in the Downtown West area. As a brief background, state law authorizes development agreements between local agencies and developers or property owners. Development agreements in the city are regulated through Title 18 of the municipal code. These six DAs have been adopted by the city council. State law and the municipal code require that the city conduct annual compliance reviews to ensure that the developers are in compliance with the terms and conditions of the DAs, which is why this item is before you tonight. This item does not involve the consideration of any new or modified DA terms or conditions, nor does this item associate with any, nor is this item associated with any new or modified land use entitlements. Each of these DAs are associated with different land use entitlements and have unique terms and conditions, and staff has completed an assessment of these DA terms and conditions, and concluded that the developers are in compliance for the period of, from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, as outlined in greater detail in the staff report. Therefore, if the PC finds that the developers associated with their respective DAs are in compliance with the terms and conditions, then staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolutions before you certify and compliance. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. And I believe at this time, we will open the floor to public comment. As a reminder, this is public comment only on the development agreements excluding the Apple and Google Development Agreements. So if anyone has any comments on those, feel free to come down to the podium at this time. Not seeing anyone move forward, so we will turn it over to the commission. We have Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the items minus Apple and Google.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreements aside from Apple and Google from Commissioner Oliverio, with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. Not seeing any other requests to speak, so if there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm seeing some hands. Did we have a question, Commissioner Bondal?
No.
Okay, nevermind. Proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no's, so the motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to the Apple Development Agreement, DA 15-002. My understanding is that the recused commissioners do not need to leave the dais unless there is discussion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess at this point, I will ask if there is any discussion on this item or if we are moving into a motion. Yes, Commissioner.
I'm making a motion to approve both the Apple and the Google items.
A second.
Actually, uh, let me think about that. So we're, we're segmenting.
Yeah, we, we voted on everything except Apple, Google.
Yeah, that's fine. So that means that Commissioner Bickford won't vote on either of those, but the problem is, is that those who are part of, who own Google stock could.
My apologies, I could separate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so motion is first for Apple.
Actually, before we vote, there's.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments specifically on the Apple Development Agreement, DA 15-002?
No, we don't.
Thank you. In that case, we can move on to the vote. So a reminder, this motion will be to approve certifying the development agreement with Apple, DA 15-002 only, from Commissioner Oliverio, with a second from.
Cantrell.
Cantrell, thank you.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry. With a second from Commissioner Bondal. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford. Oh, sorry. Is recused Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is eight yes, zero no, one abstention, so the motion passes. And I will now turn it over to Vice Chair Cantrell.
Okay, so the motion, we, the next item up is the vote on item DA 21-001. Is there any comment from the public? No comment. Thank you. Okay, so then I'll leave it open to the floor.
Motion to approve the final item, which is Google.
A second.
Most excellent. Thank you. Let's take a vote. Are any, any other comments from the, okay, let's take a vote, starting with Chair. Oh, that's right, you're not going to vote. Sorry. I'll just start in that, down from that end. Bondal?
Yes.
Rosario? Oh, you recused too. Oh, my, my, okay. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
And.
No.
Oh, that's right. Is it just you? Oh, that's right. Lardinois, I'm sorry, we, we left you out there because you're recusing.
That's all right, yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's the vote. That is, how many? Five? That's great, because that's what we need. All right, votes are in. We're, we're done with that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cantrell. That concludes the public hearing for this evening's agenda. We'll move on to referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Staff, do we have any referrals this evening?
We do not.
Okay, in that case, we will move on to good and welfare. Do we have a report from city council?
Yes. So yesterday, we were at city council with the plan development rezoning and the plan development permit that the planning commission heard at their last meeting for the monopine located on South King Road. The city council had a lively discussion around the item, and based on the information that was received by the planning commission, the petition from the neighbors, the city council asked staff to go back and do some additional outreach with the neighborhood and have deferred that item until September 24th, when they will take it up again. And that's the only item we had at city council.
Thank you. Anything on subcommittee formation, reports, outstanding business, or commissioning calendar and study sessions?
No.
Okay, then as always, we will open the floor to any questions or comments from commissioners for the public record. Not seeing any hands, so that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. We are adjourning at 8:29 PM. Thank you, everyone.